Good evening. My name is Neil Turner, I'm the Vice President of the Rochester School Board. And we are here to meet tonight for our regular school board meeting. And at this time, we're called to order and we will start with the flags to leave. Vagely.
United States of America.
United States of America.
One nation, America.
In the digital.
Liberty, so that's six or all.
Each other way. Now we'll move on to our roll call. Thomas Trot is excused today, our Chair. And so, Michael?
President.
Suzie?
Hi, Sam.
Grant?
President.
And I'm Neil, I'm here too. So, roll call done. And next thing we're going to move on to is our budget hearing. And I believe I need to read this verbatim. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain public testimony or comment before discussions are made by the board. After the presentation, all attending members of the public will be provided an opportunity to speak on the topic presented if they so desire. Public hearing testimony is separate from the public comment and sign in is not required. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less and begin by stating your name for the record purposes. And if it is determined that you are not speaking on the present presiding topic, you will be asked to sign in and speak during one of our approved public comment sessions. And I believe we're due public comment after this.
Right, after the presentation.
Wonderful. And we are ready, Jill.
Okay. There we go. Do the next one. One more. And so for the 2425 budget, it was so weird to write 2425 on there because I'm still in 2020. But I liked 2425 budget. We'll be able to collect the full amount of our approved levy, which is about 5.1 million. We did have a loss of all our ester funding, so compared to last year, that's about 2 million. It's the reason why we just went through budget reductions to cut about $2 million. Expenditures, our property liability insurance will increase 30%, which is about $168,000, which is on top of the 169,000 increase in 2324. So those insurance rates are increasing at a rate that the state is not keeping up with funding. Staff will receive a 3.7% pay increase, which is I P E D. And I'm making a note that we're still negotiating with certificated staff, so that's not finalized for them. A majority of our budget is based on student F T E and how many students we're serving, so there's some historical data there. We are expected to increase a little for 2425. And these numbers are all inclusive of all our students, so that's our students in the seats, our running star, all our kids. So in summary, for 2425, a beginning balance of about 2 million, our revenues are just over 38,000 and our expenditures just under 37,000. So hoping to end the year gaining a little bit of fund balance of 2.158 million. I feel you've seen this a lot lately, but just a reminder about policy 6022, which states that the goal is to have our ending fund balance between 5 and 8% of budgeted expenditures. So you can see there with our 37.8 million budgeted expenditures, 5% would be 1.892 million and 8% would be 3,027,000. Back one. Yep. So just a little bit of more information on there. Our projected average monthly payroll is 2.2 million. Our projected average monthly expenditures is 3.1. And our projected ending fund balance in August 25 is 2.1. And our projected ending unrestricted is 1.98. So something to point out there is that fund balance policy was written, I would guess at least 10 years ago. And 5 and 8 was what was recommended. Jennifer and I have been talking a lot lately. When your average monthly payroll is 2.2 million, maybe 5% isn't enough anymore. Because the 5% is only 1.8 million. So in current financial times, we might want to think about changing those projections of what we'd like our fund balance to be, at least to cover pay. So the breakdown of our revenues for next year, our levy again of that 5.192 million, local revenues of $150,000. And those local revenues are things like facility use, our chrome assurance fees, any fines and fees that kids pay. Interest income. And then for general state, 21.6 million, this is just the apportionment we receive for our basic ed kids. State specific of 8.6 million, those are programs like LAPD and bilingual and HICA that has specific purposes that money can be spent on. Our federal programs of 2.3 million. And other school districts, 25,000. And we receive payments from other school districts for things like sometimes we serve a special ed kid, so they pay us for that. Or we provide transportation, so they pay us for that. So that information in a pie chart for the visuals. Federal programs, I want to point out, is 6%. Last year when we had ester dollars, that was 13%. So that piece of the pie cut a little over half, which is a big reason why we had to cut this year. Another look at the, though I guess we're on expenditures. Nope, you're good, thanks. So the breakdown of how we spend our money, certificated salaries of 15.4 million, classified salaries of 4.5 million, employee benefits at 6.9 million, supplies 1.3 million, contracted services at 9.3 million. And if you were to compare us to another district on those contracted services, ours might look a little high because that includes our transportation and food service contracts. CTE grant funded travel, the 158,000 and capital outlay at 23,000. That same information in the pie chart, this actually stayed pretty consistent. There was like a 1% movement between them from last year. The general fund expenditure is broken down in a different view of the categories we spend them on. Our basic ed at 18.8 million, special education at 6,200,000, CTE education 1.1 million, Title I, the support services of 2.8 million, why they might call it support services, 8.6 million, that's every custodial, maintenance, utilities, insurance. That's all considered support services. I'm required to report to you for material supplies and operating costs. The amount funded by the state is 2.9 million and the amount budgeted is 3.9 million. So we will spend everything the state give us for material supplies and operating costs plus a little more. So that is the end for general fund. Do we have any general fund questions?
What about those timber dollars?
How about them?
Resolved?
No, not yet. Work in progress.
Yeah, because we need to, whatever we got to do, that's gone on now for more than almost two years.
And we are working on it.
Okay.
We haven't forgot about them.
It's funding that should be for our district and somebody else is screwing it up. So, thank you.
Yep. So another fund we budget for is the transportation vehicle fund. This money is specified to buy yellow buses only, that's all we can spend the money on. And so we'll start the year at 188,000, our revenues are 19,000, expenditures of 185,000, plan to build a bus, build a bus, buy a bus, leaving an ending fund balance of 22,000. The next fund we budget for is capital projects, beginning fund balance of 3.4, revenues of 91,000. And the big majority of those revenues are mitig impact fees that builders pay when they get a building permit on a home. Expenditures of 325,000, ending fund balance of 3.2. So the makeup of that 325,000 is really just to have the capacity, if something were to break, if our water system were to go down, if our roof would fall apart, we would have the capacity to fix what we needed. But there aren't any currently planned specific projects for next year. Debt service fund, 821,000, revenues of 32,000, ending fund balance of 853. In the A S B fund, beginning fund balance of 495, revenues of 408, expenditures are 420, ending fund balance of 483. And I will point out that for A S B, our 612 levels, the kids actually prepare these. They put together a spreadsheet, they talk about what they plan on spending, how much money they're going to do, what can they do? And then the council approves it, so the students are active in this budget. And the last piece is we are required to have a crystal ball to guess what our financial forecast is for the next four years, even though we have no idea what the legislature is going to do in the next four years. So this just breaks down what our projections were. If you look at general fund, we end up very small. If we keep status quo, the fund balance dwindles to very little. So that is all I have to report on the budget. If there are any questions.
More members, any question? Any questions from the public? Do we have anybody signed up? Or do we have anybody online on Zoom?
Nope.
We should wait probably 30 seconds at least? Great time.
We confirm no public comment.
No public comments? Okay. Shall I still wait or shall we go forward? We're good? Okay, I just don't want someone to feel that we were not allowing them to have their opportunity. All right, well, thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
All right. No questions from the board? All right. So next, the next is going to be public comment for items that are on our agenda this evening. Again, do we have anybody online and do we have anybody waiting to speak? We'll give it 15 seconds. All right. Well, this time we're going to move on to number five, our consent agenda for the evening. And do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda tonight?
So moved.
All right, moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, first and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passive. All right. Now we move on. Next to number six will be our reports this evening. And we'll start with business report.
I don't know why I sat down. So our enrollment count is finalized, so the last count at the end of June. We ended the year with 2029 F T E, which put us at 50 F T E over budget. Running start, we had 90 running start participants and 37 were running start only. Hart High School ended the year at 37.72 F T E. Special education count was 347 and there were seven kids eligible to be counted for the dropout reengagement program.
Wonderful.
And then this is just a visual chart of that top number of our student F T E. So the red arrow points to where we ended this year, which is higher than 2021. So we're working our way back up.
Over 2,000, wonderful. Okay. But do you have any question? Not now?
Okay.
Gotcha, I meant.
Okay.
Does board members have any questions for Jill on those numbers? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our athletic report.
You got it, Kevin, with the wrong one. Kevin had a pre-scheduled family thing going on, so I told him I would cover this. Really awesome year athletically for Rochester School District as a whole. The information, you can see our programs are growing, but the thing that's really cool and kind of helpful for us as we move down into 1A is the number of multi-sport athletes we have. That's that little box down the right side, that students playing more than one sport. And what that indicates is these kids are not just playing once and walking away, they're playing a lot of sports, they're engaged all year long. Pretty valuable and pretty important to the growth of our programs and helps us stay competitive. I'm going to the next slide. Here's the high school. This is kind of cool graphic, just for the fact that if you look to the right side where we have our team GPAs, that these are not only student athletes, but they're students and they're working hard in the class. And they're successful out in competing on the field and the court, but they're doing an even greater job in the classroom and really doing well. So that's, I think that's a very huge thing. And obviously you'll see, or have our kids play multi-sports, so they're playing more than one sport. And so that bodes well for us, you can see almost all our programs are growing. Soccer for boys, both in the middle school and the high school went down low this year, I think it's kind of cyclical. Having to make some choices between the sports offerings is a challenge there for them, I'm guessing. I'm going to go to the next slide. Ooh, there we go. Baseball, qualified. When you think about it, we're the smallest school in the district or in the league and we're qualifying. That's pretty impressive with all the teams that they have to compete against. A lot of students, players getting recognized on the first team. I think that's pretty impressive and exciting. I'm going to go to the next slide. Fast pitch, really exciting, all kinds of recognition and small school in the league and MVP is on our team. That's pretty cool. So, and they qualify for state. That's extremely impressive for a school our size at the 2A level to compete and get that far. So that's really hats off to our girls for working so hard and working together to make awesome things happen. Go ahead, next.
I think there was two seniors on that team. Right?
Go back one slide real quick.
Just two seniors, I believe.
Sarah and Macy, yeah, because they, they're on a slide here in the future because they signed to Centralia, so yes.
Yeah, but I think they're the only ones, so their whole team has come back.
And our MVP comes back. Then we switch leagues. Soccer did very well this year. I don't know if you guys go to any of the games, but he says, it's on there, we had four games with penalty kicks and we won three of them. If you've not seen a soccer game, go to PKs, it is nerve wracking and fun. And watching the parents and the kids is just enjoyable. And the fact that we won three of the four is really cool. So they're growing and they're developing, they're doing, they're kind of getting their legs back under them and we're looking forward to next year. Okay, go ahead, next one. We had Izzy qualify for state golf. She almost, she just missed the cut to go to the second day, it was, the cut was 96 and she scored a 99. And she just had one bad hole in that sunker out of 18, which is a tough break for her. We had Sadie Dupont qualify for state in 200 meter and 400 meter and Gunnar Morgan in the 1600 and 3200. So lots of success there. Particularly being able to compete the state level on track is really tough because there's a lot of tough track athletes out there. And so our kids are doing a great job competing and making it to state level. Go ahead, go next. Um. I'm really proud of this one because if you look at that small section down the bottom left, it shows our rankings, our sports against other schools in our division. And it shows you how well, not only are teams performing on the field academically, kind of reinforces those GPAs we saw in a couple of slides ago. Our kids are working really hard and they're doing well. And if you look at the far right with this classic cup for the league, we took third and every one of those schools is bigger than us. And a lot of them are significantly bigger than us. So that speaks a lot to the quality of our kids and our community investing in our students and the time that they put into academics to ensure that they're able to compete. Go ahead, go to the next one. And this is a cool one. These are the students that will be playing after high school, they've graduated and they are going on to play at collegiate level. Jay Nichols playing football at Lynnfield. We've got Audrey and Cooper Rowde here going to South Puget Sound to play golf. Macy and Sarah are going to Centralia College for fast pitch. Parker McCafferty is going to Evergreen State College to run. And then we've got Hayden Petras, Henry Grams, Walker and Mason going out to play community college baseball with hopes of extending on beyond that. And then we also have Tate Pornstrom and Jay Nichols playing in the all-state football game here shortly. That's it. Any questions?
Well, I have none. Congratulations, Grant.
Good job getting on the course, we're going to club, man.
Yeah, we played yesterday.
Thank you, guys.
I didn't win.
All right. Well, next on our list will be facilities report tonight.
Evening. Let's give you some basic viewpoints here. I'll start with R P S. Some of the concerns we have with R P S is our roof, we've been keeping an eye on that. We're looking at a roof replacement in probably three to five years. We have, our backup boiler is old and outdated in that school. It's still functioning, but it's on our radar to, in the near future for problematic concerns. To complete in the near future, we're going to try to redo the summer, the playground drain system, make it the same as the drainage system we put in G M S. So that the kids aren't, they call it Lake R P S in the wintertime. So we'll put that in. The one we put in in G M S two years ago was limiting all the mine and the tracking and whatnot, so. G M S, not a whole lot of serious concerns right now, but we do have some positives. We have, with grant funds, we have a new paved walking track. That's the pictures you see on the left, the top and the bottom. That is the track being laid down. The one on the bottom is the track completed. There's still a pile of dirt there that we fill in the edges so that our mower doesn't catch the track when we mow it. That's a huge asset to the kids. Whoever's the principal there next year, I'm sure is going to have a grand opening just because now kids can run around that thing and do whatever they want. They've been looking for that for a long time. We put in a, four years ago, we put in a gravel track there, which is a big upgrade than running in the mud. But ever since R P S has gotten theirs, everybody else wants one, so. R M S, I'll jump to the positive side and we were able to put a paved track at R M S as well. So there's a nice aerial picture of where the track is. The picture on the right is going out past the baseball football goalpost and stuff. It's a nice eight foot wide track as well. That is probably even more so sought after than the one at G M S because they were all just walking in the grass. And everybody's getting soaking wet and we tried to mow it and the more you lower you mow the grass, the more mud you made. So when they come back, they will be quite excited to have a paved walking track. Both of these were done with grant funds. So that was a huge benefit to get that grant.
And there were grant funds to make it accessible, so it was an ADA grant. And so kids with wheelchairs or walkers or, you know, just that was not possible for any students who had accessibility or challenges.
Yeah, that kids can now participate with the other classrooms at the same time, so. Some of the concerns at R P S is it, roof issues on that as well. We're looking, we're looking at three to five years, most likely a replacement on that roof. The boiler, the backup boiler at R M S is the same boiler that is at R P S. The only downside is that it is failing. It's the same old cast iron plates, they don't make those boilers anymore. And positive side is when it finally does fail and we pull that out, we're going to try to use it as parts to keep the one at R P S going. So. But it's due to be replaced. So that's coming up. We're currently working on the irrigation system and the sports field. Of course, we've been fighting to get in the sports field. It looks really good in that picture there, but it's been a constant challenge trying to keep that thing level so that kids can play soccer and mow and stuff out there.
And that's at R M S.
That's at R M S.
What's the top left picture of?
This is the high school. This is the water reservoir. The top left is the fix that we put into place. We do monthly water samples, we got water samples back that failed. The testing shows plant-based color form in them and it's because of our water system. Our water system, the reservoir is so outdated. The piping of it is so degraded. The reservoir itself is cracked. What you're seeing there is a framing system in the top left that we built because we were stretching that tarp in the middle over. You see relative around the outside edges so that our tarp didn't rub in half from the tarp when the wind blew. The pictures you see on the bottom are, after we did this, we flushed our system, all our water system was good. Our wells are fantastic water, it's just when it gets to the reservoir, that's where the problem breaks down because the reservoir is failing. It's cracked, it's loud contaminants, so we've got piping, it's the same thing that we've been dealing with. This has happened twice now, last May and it happened again this May. And it's because all the pollen that comes out, when you only go out and you see that yellow all over your car, well, that lays on top of that reservoir and then it rains, it takes it straight through the crack, straight into the reservoir. We had an outfit that came out and did an inspection and we watched a video, it's actually entertaining to watch the video. And at first they're talking about it and they're thinking the cracks don't look that bad, it doesn't look that bad. And, but then I said, wait and I'll show you. And I stuck around and went through some motions and then they're like, oh my gosh, you know, they, from what they said on the beginning of the video until the end, they're like, oh my gosh, it's, this is really bad. So that's up there in the top right is the diving team, they had to come out and inspect the reservoir, they dived in there. The last time we had that done was in 2008. As for our water getting into it, it's really good, the water's good, we don't have a lot of sediment. I mean, what they consider would be a bad sediment would be three inches above the reservoir, we had a sixteenth of an inch to an eighth inch. So our wells are doing good, everything's doing good, it's just the containment is the problem.
And how big is your set of divers in?
It's 78,000 gallons, so it's about, it's about 36 by 36, 12 feet deep, 10 to 12 feet deep. Yeah. Yeah, the bottom two pitches are them using a special aquatic epoxy to patch the cracks, trying to find them, which is a huge challenge. You have to almost pressurize the tank and have the top completely wet in order to see where the cracks are. Of course, then when it's completely wet, it's hard to lay down the box to get a good seal. So it will patch through water, but it's just a huge challenge finding where everything is. There's a fine level of filling the reservoir to pressurize it and not damaging the other electrical components that we just put in that have been working quite well since we put them in. So it's, it's, it's the challenge that we've been facing that everybody knows about, it's been quite a challenge. We have, currently at the high school right now, the pictures you see here, this is the siding, the overhang, on the overhangs, that is the ongoing battle of breaking down, deteriorating, falling off on the ground. Our infrastructure on the, our piping, we've got two major leaks right now that we're fighting, trying to keep fields irrigated because of three inch lines that are damaged. It's just, everything is just getting so old. The boiler is in repair right now at this school because all the piping for the boiler has, all the flanges are rusting and the rest is separating the flanges to make the fittings leak. So we're in a process of taking all that apart, trying to clean them up, sandblaster, repaint them, recult them and trying to get them to go back together. Our dry fire system is creeping up on us again. We seem to get to this almost every year, every other year. Right now, our backup compressor that keeps our dry fire system air blocked is running every 10 to 15 minutes. It should run maybe once a day. It's just there's that many leaks in the system and getting to where the leaks are is just, it's a huge undertaking trying to find where they are. So if that leaks, then the system gets flooded, the dry system, the pressure gets off, the system gets flooded. And every time we have, we have to bring people in to go through the system, maintenance working on it and then it's 3,000 to 5,000 dollars. So piping repair is 15 to 25,000 dollars. So good for our H S is we have finally, we got the new fast pitch field, we put the maintenance shop in, JB practiced on it. Last year they wanted to do a game, but we didn't, couldn't quite get the dugouts in. We hope to get those dugouts in this summer. We got the post and everything for them, but they're excited to have two bits, two ballfields for the girls, so.
Let's speak a little bit about the football field. Last year we had to close it off for the summer, this year we're really trying not to.
Yeah, we're trying to keep it open to the public, but it's just, we do the dance of people wanting to use it and us needing to irrigate it and give it time to rest and aerate it and fertilize it. And of course fertilizing, you don't want kids back out there. So we're watching it closely. Kevin Yurk and I have been having conversations, we're literally watching it week to week. And we may, if we can't keep the field from getting tore up, we may have to close the field. We like to keep the track open because people like to walk the track, but last year we had to close the facility just so that we can get it to recoup later. You just get so much use during sports season that you need some time for it to recoup. And it's just, it's just, you know, like right now we got youth football going in there and it's great to see them out there, but it's, it just takes. it's it just takes a lot of wear and tear when you're trying to get the track refurbished, that field reconditioned.
Going to ask about the other tracks that we're putting in at all the all the campuses. Are the public allowed to use those all?
Man gates are left open. The big gates are locked, so the cars can't get back there, but the man gates are open. So, yeah, so every school has a walking track.
Quite a few options.
Yeah, yeah.
And we will be sharing that information as soon as we can.
We have so right now we have water pipes that we're fighting in the high school in the walls. It's leaking through the walls, coming out of floor tiles. We think it's on the hot water side. Again, the boiler so old in in the school, you know, it's just some of the challenges we got with that building. We got one or two bullet points on every other school and I've got eight ten on the high school. It's just the main thing. So any questions?
Board, anybody? Any other questions? I'd like to say thank you for all the efforts in keeping our fields in good shape. And last fall, the football field looked really good shape. People go out there at halftime during a football game and walk around and go, this is nice.
I will also invite Ed to share a little bit with you as I share with you. There is a small district modernization program that the legislature has put aside funds for small school districts. And this time we actually qualify. So it's for districts specifically specifically from a hundred and one to three thousand students or not a hundred and one, sorry, thousand and one to three thousand students. So we do qualify. We can ask for up to twelve million dollars. And so we're working now to see what that will be. I believe it's going to be water system is on is top on our list. And we just met with Lowell today and a long conversation about concerns there and we'll be coming and sharing a little bit more about what we need to do there, but that will be one of the things on the list. And then it has to be system improvement. So it couldn't be additional buildings or additional structures. So water system fits perfectly. It could also be roofs. So we're looking at that. It could also be a boiler. So we're looking at some of those types of things. That will be put on a request. It's due the end of August, so we have to get it done pretty quickly and then turn around. Shouldn't I hope is it wouldn't take that long response.
If you get it, you have like just a year to spend it or a couple of years?
No, we just we have to assure we're using it on the system improvements that we've set. We can't delay, but we if it takes longer to get it done than a year, we think that's okay.
That's wonderful. Cool. All right. Well, moving on, we are now at our superintendent report this evening.
All right, so next. Thank you. All right. First of all, historical archives. So I did meet with Don Weaver and some of the chamber members showed them space options. And they did reply and they are interested in using the space in this building. So looking to you guys to see if you want me to develop a contract with them. And that would then mean we develop a contract with Boys and Girls Club. So you can give me feedback individually as you as you wish. But that is good news that they're they're seeing a lot of benefits in being able to use that space. So now we're working on getting that rid of all of our surplus. The timber harvest, Neil spoke a little bit about the timber harvest and I we've been engaged in the timber harvest since we talked with the D N R board representative. Boy, that was
Two years ago.
Was it two years ago? It couldn't have been. No, it was spring a year ago. Yes. Okay. Because I've only been here two years. So it was spring a year ago. And the latest development with that is that the Thurston County Commissioners had elected to choose to lend their name to an fire with an environmental group who was pressing litigation to try and stop the timber harvest. And so I had, and I will share you, I had sent a letter out to all of the commissioners.
Which commissioners were involved in this?
I sent it to all of them. So they all voted. And this was back in May that I had sent. I did get a reply. Oh, let's see. I think I copied the same. I did get a reply from Commissioner Messner. And ultimately, what's happening now is the the D N R, the the board is waiting until October to move forward on the timber harvest. And they have said that, did you all, I think you've got mixed ones here. Sorry.
This is the response.
Yes, that's the one. That's the one from by Messner. He was the only one that replied. But the D N R is waiting until October to move forward with the harvest. They say that in October, what they're asking is that Thurston County makes all of the agencies that get get money from timber sales whole by providing the funding some some way. It would be seven point million dollars just to make the school school districts whole. That doesn't even include the fire districts. So they are, I haven't, I don't know what Thurston County is talking about doing, but supposedly in October, it does not even take a vote for the harvest to continue by the D N R board. It's just a timeline that they set in place. I'll know more after July second. They have a meeting on July second. I will be just speaking my or giving on and doing public comment there to let them know that I support the actions they're taking. But if if it moves forward in October, then they would continue forward in harvesting the timber at that point. It is a significant amount of money for us. So
I'm not sure I'm tracking. I want to. I think I'm going to go on the subject too.
Oh, you are. Okay. I'm not going to be there. I'm going to be online just.
I think I may go with.
Okay.
But you're supporting. Tell me what you're supporting.
I will support. I'm going to confirm, but I believe what the D N R board has said now is that they are just simply waiting until October for the county to come up with a different way to make us hold. If they can find a different way to make us hold, then they will review the harvesting. But they still have the rights to determine
Yeah.
what they cut and when they cut it.
Yeah.
But that was, they have said they will wait until October to see if the county can do it. I don't think the county has the resources to do that. So that's that's what I would be supporting. Is, and I've got some notes. I could send them to you if you want to.
I'd like to send.
Okay. But just to support the fact that they are going to move forward, that they're going to use the management that they have developed and the resources, the research that they've done and developing their harvesting harvest and you know, just agree that they should follow their specialists who have developed a plan.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
We are the local stakeholders. This land that they have acquisition because they consider it to be legacy trees. It's physically in our district boundaries. So this is something that I try to be understanding and you know, dealing with when D N R came in here and spoke to us and explained what was going on. And now we've got other people that are said the same thing is going on in Mason County too. And it's just like
It's gone over. Yeah.
Yeah. The problem is a lot of these forests are becoming diseased and even more fire prone because they are not being cleared and harvested in a in a correct manner. And so actually, a lot of times it creates more carbon in the air when these things burn. Then it would be if somebody was actually, you know, harvesting and try to have a healthy forest between the root rot and you know, the the beetle, there's a beetle that's in there and we have them up here and that is causing a lot of problems. And then the forest companies, they don't want the trees once they have the rot. And they have the 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 they die from the beetles. It creates bad situation. Yeah, yeah. Excellent.
This is a letter from Jeff Merriman from the Fire Commissioner Commission. And they are just proposing that if you would like to get together and have a discussion with them about it, they would be interested. After talking to Jeff, I think his thoughts are he was going to go back and talk, but probably waiting to see what happened on the second to determine if a meeting is necessary or still something that should take place, but wanting to join join forces is what.
How much how much does this affect the West Thurston Regional?
They receive funds as well, not quite as much as the schools do, but they do receive funds. Did you guys, there might.
Did we get a copy of this? Yeah, he he briefly spoke out the Swede Dad, and I suggested he contact you about whether a group meeting or when you do something publicly. I didn't have any answers for him. I said, contact you.
Yep, thank you.
Good. Yeah. These are the things that affect us locally down here.
Yeah.
Thurston Regional, they are the largest fire district in Thurston County.
Yeah.
Room and all the different things that they do. And they're spread thin.
In the letter that I wrote to Thurston County, I do outline the money that we would be taking. And so if you want to see exactly what it is, it's in that letter.
Excellent. Cool.
All right.
Good answers.
Uh, next, just a note. Was the conference is November twenty one through twenty third in Spokane. Don't want to talk about it tonight, but just putting it out there to to for you to think about. Is that something we want to go to again this year? I, we can talk about it more, but this way you could look at dates and things. Cumulative migration. So this is ours. Both our business, it's our student management system and it's our business management system. It's where we do all of our payroll. It's where we do all of our counting of students and we take attendance in there. It basically is the system that we use to make sure we keep everything straight in the district and we are switching over in July. We go completely black on, I think it's July ten ninth, July ninth at four o'clock, three o'clock, three o'clock. I, there are so many people who have been working so hard to make sure that we are ready for this migration because we have to have all our data cleaned up. We need to have for instance, the budget needed to be done. Typically, you don't get a budget for next year until August. So we had to have our budget done because we needed to do it in the system that we knew. And so it's all been done. And now we can roll over all of July's payroll will be done before we roll over on July ninth. We have to have all of our student data cleaned, everything, just everything we use Skyward for had to be cleaned up and ready to go. We're still working. We still have a week and two weeks, two, two weeks and almost two days to finish up the work. But
Justin will be back?
Justin will be back, but he's, yeah, he's actually not a big part of that work. He's been a part of managing, making sure we're ready to come out of it and training our teachers because we will have a new grade book. We'll have a new way to take attendance. We things will be different when we come out on the other side. So it's a big update. We go dark and at three o'clock on July ninth. And then we come back up alive basically for everybody in the district on July twenty second. The fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, some people will start to access it to start to get, make sure things transferred over well. So just so you're aware, during that time, if you look at the next one, our summer just office hours, basically just July, we're going to be open Tuesday, Tuesday through Thursday with the exception of July fourth through twelfth. Because we don't have any student management, business management system, we are totally dark for that whole week. Instead of taking the July fourth week off when we're really going to be working madly to get everything done, we're closing the office July fourth through that last week to make sure that everything is cleaned up and ready to go. So next slide. Strategic Plan and the core team we've been meeting. We have instructional focus team that's been meeting. Our administrators met and did some work on the plan. We met with the plan core team now two times. They meet again in August. If you go to the next slide. Our core team has been working diligently to their first, you've heard me say they went over a lot of data. They had binders full of data. And the next thing that we started working on was a portrait of a graduate. And one of the questions we posed or stated, I guess, quotes that we shared with them was this quote to have everybody think about when we thought about what's a portrait of our graduate. We said, let's look at this. We are currently preparing students for jobs that don't yet exist, using technologies that haven't been invented. In order to solve problems, we don't even know our problems yet. And we asked knowing that that's what our kids, especially if we think about our kindergarteners today, right? What is it that we want our graduates to look like? So that's been the stem of our conversation. And now we're looking at our our, the qualities, the attributes that we want our our kid, our kids to have and our, the characteristics that we want them to have when they graduate. That's where the work that we've been diving into the work with the with the core team and especially with the with our the core team that consists of all of our different stakeholders. And it's been great conversations. I think I mentioned before, we have students at every single one of our tables and oh, my gosh, they are diving in with good comments that and some of them that stood up and were the ones that were sharing information and they're really taking their involvement very seriously. And we also have a lot of community members and we have teachers that are coming back. So we met July eighteenth and school was out and we had teachers and staff who were back to to engage in this work. It's a lot of good work. Suzie's been there with us. Andrea's son was there. Good stuff going on. I think there's one more quote. This was what we shared. The portrait of a of a graduate. What is a portrait of a graduate? It's a community wide vision statement of attributes a graduate must possess to succeed in learning and life, both school and beyond now and in a rapidly evolving world. So that's what we were trying to figure out for our community. What is that vision? So good work that's happening. And when we meet in August, we'll engage more around that promise statement that we started to work on in June or May. It's all blending. I think it was June, actually, wasn't it? It was June. It's last Tuesday. Yes. All right. Next thing there is just a celebration, our class of twenty twenty four. The left side there is our heart graduates and the right side is R H S graduates. We had a hundred and twenty three graduates from R H S and we had nine graduates from heart. So a lot of graduates, we have a couple of kids still working to get over the finish line. And we will celebrate them when they do. But wonderful graduations, wonderful, wonderful, wonderful celebrations with our kids. And we did have two retirees this year. Carrie Richards and K Marquez. Carrie was with us for sixteen years. Kay was for twenty five. Their pitchers up there together because they were a team. They worked at R P S. They spent a ton of time together. They managed the hub. I get confused between Grand Mountain and but the hub. And boy, the kids knew him, the staff knew him, everybody appreciated him. And you know, whenever somebody retires, you hear just the amount of impact that they had on our system. And these two ladies certainly did. They made a difference for the kids and the staff at R P S for many, many years. So together, over forty one years of experience, but retired at the very end of the school year. They certainly worth recognizing. And we still have our bond survey, uh, feedback survey up. So if you know anybody, it's out there. We'll put it up on Facebook again. We're trying to get it out as much as we can, but as we want as many people replying as as we can get to that.
Do you have any numbers on how many responses?
Just over a hundred. And most of them are people connected to the district. So I'm still trying to get the people who are not connected to the district.
So a question, I'll admit to my, I have to tell you here, we saw it and forgot how we're supposed to scan it.
Oh.
How do you, how do you scan it when it comes across?
There's a way to do that. Yeah. In the comments.
A link in the comments.
We're going to put it on Facebook again and that link will It'll be there Sunday.
Thank you. Okay.
Your eyes.
I know, exactly.
No, that's what we realized after we did it, we're like, oh man, shoot, so. Yes.
But exactly.
Yeah, Andrea said it is on our homepage of our district, so to get there too, but yes, good question and we, you weren't the only one. And our last slide there, just upcoming events, so we have a board meeting on July tenth, I don't know that we're gonna need that. But I haven't canceled it yet, so I will let you know. We do need a board meeting during the week of July twenty second though. We are working on a food service contract, we can't uh vote to approve a contract on, in July, on July tenth, it's too early. So I'm proposing that we have a virtual meeting on July twenty-fourth. With basically being a one or two item meeting agenda. But we definitely have to, during the week of July twenty-second, uh meet to approve the food service contract. There's three different companies that are, looks like they're gonna submit bids for our food service contracts and that's gonna, we've gotta make a decision that needs a vote of the board. Jill, anything to add to that? Okay, so twenty-fourth, would that work, especially if we did it virtually?
Virtually, I could probably do it.
I know it works for Thomas.
We're gonna, I know, I'm not sure if it has.
Yes. All right.
I gotta, I gotta look at my schedule, I don't even know where everything is at.
I will check with you guys and see, and it, and if it's not the twenty-fourth, if you can check if you aren't able to do it on the twenty-fourth, but you would be able to do it a different day that week, if you can let me know, that'd be great.
I, I, I head's in the wrong, but I, I should be.
Okay.
Yeah, it's August.
All right.
Despite I'm thinking the twenty.
Okay, so you should be okay, all right. Okay, I will confirm with you to see, but we're looking at the twenty-fourth, it's a Wednesday, that's what we're used to doing, that's why that day was selected. Uh, the fourteenth of August is a work session, strategic plan core meeting on the twenty-first. And you can see then, boy, our kids' families are back on the twenty eighth to the thirtieth for success conferences and we have a board meeting on the twenty eighth. First day of classes is September third, it is just around the corner.
Summer. They're already getting shorter.
That's all I have for this.
Well, anybody have any questions? I will press maybe one more thing. Do we know, like, our retreat day, have we set that?
It is in the agenda that we set, yes, so I can get that out too.
Okay, it, but it's like September, right, or October? October.
And last week and September first week on October.
Okay.
Yeah.
No worries. Well, sounds like a plan. I just thank Suzie for attending the uh meetings that are ongoing. And hopefully that will help give us some direction moving into our future. So, next, we are on the new business.
Actually, old business first.
Oh, old business, oh, yeah, we don't wanna forget that. Pardon me. Our old dog business is our superintendent's annual evaluation. And it's just information that we all filled out and looked at and like everybody approves. Um, so what have we gotta do?
You just need to acknowledge it there.
We just acknowledge it, it's there and we see it. Okay, that's our old business. Wonderful, wonderful. Okay, so now we're on to new business, correct?
You are right.
All right. So, our new business today, are we taking actions on any of these, or all of them, or?
All of them, I believe.
All of them, all right, so we got a bunch of stuff to run through. Okay, um, our new business today, starting with admissions student fee schedule.
Um, so this is our student fee schedule for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, there are no changes to this fee schedule. It's the same as it was twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Right. Did we have a chance to look at it, so this point, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Move, do we have a second?
Seconded.
All right, Suzie seconds, do we have any discussion? No discussion, uh, to make a motion to approve. Where's it, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, aye, aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Any practice? Next on our list is athletics, R H S ticket pricing.
Um, so this one, there are some changes, we are moving from two A to one A. And we have to, uh, our ticket prices have to be in line with the um one A teams, and so that's the changes that we've made. The single individual prices go up a little bit. The family ticket price goes down.
Yeah. Families. Cool. So, all right, board, we have a motion to approve. R H S ticket pricing.
So moved.
All right, grant moves, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Michael seconds, all right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, next, we are moving on to business, Chromebooks.
This is a request to be able to purchase a hundred and fifty Chromebooks for our kindergarteners. Our seniors, they had Chromebooks, but they're pretty old. And so we would start our kindergarteners with new Chromebooks. This is uh, these Chromebooks would be purchased with title one funds.
Yeah. All right, oh, board, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Grant moves, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Suzie seconds, all right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right. Next, we are on to uh business asset and progress monitoring.
Yep, it's an admission product, progress monitoring license, this is uh for English language learners. Um, and this will allow us to monitor, it, it allows us to purchase progress monitoring assessment uh that we would use with our E L L students. Uh, the transitional bilingual instructional program funds will be used to purchase that. If you have any questions, Maggie is here.
Hmm. Is this grant funded?
It is.
Grant funded, cool. I like it. Well, board? We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Grant moves, do we have a second? Suzie seconds, any discussion? Hearing no discussions? Huh?
Did you have a question? Okay.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything.
You're right.
All right, so uh, no discussion, all in favor, say aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Nope. Hearing none, motion passes. All right, next, curriculum purchase, I believe this is the stuff that uh this tank, yes, this is the stuff we reviewed at our our, our board.
Work session.
My work session, yes it was. Very interesting. All right, would a board member like to make a motion to approve this purchase? Suzie moves it, we have a second?
Second.
Michael seconds, do we have, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll move to a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Okay. Cast off, so I'm, I'm doing better, but you know, I shouldn't be official about it. All right, facilities, R M S and G M S track.
Yes, this is the one that we moved a little quick on, so all the information is here. Um, the different bids that we did have and then uh this is a grant, this was a grant funded project to pay R M S and G M S tracks behind the buildings.
Excellent.
I have a question. So did the funding that we get cover, completely cover the amount?
Yes.
We didn't have to pay any of it. So do we get the extra money, was there any extra money?
I wish, that goes to taxes, any extra money goes to the tax.
I'm just wondering if there was any extra left over or?
No, we were actually related to get this because I applied for this several months ago.
Right.
And was denied. And then they all of a sudden came back, that's part of the reason why this kinda got rushed through. They came back. They sent me an email at the end of mail saying, you've been approved and it has to be completed by June twenty-four. I'm like, what? So, we were able to actually get an extension on and everything, but we got the wheel, it was supposed to actually happen the end of June. And but then the contract, when the contractor says, I got an opening now, so that's why it happened before the meet.
Who actually owes paybacks that did it?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the closest other bid was a hundred and some thousand dollars.
How much?
Hundred and some thousand dollars more.
Yeah, that close.
Oh, a two hundred thousand dollars on a hundred thousand dollar grant, so it's a pretty easy decision.
Yeah.
All right, and on this one, do we, did you each one these individually or did you always one block?
Track at two, yes.
Okay. This time, would someone like to make the motion to approve the facilities, R M S and G M S track?
So move.
I moved it, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Suzie seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Yeah. On to the next one, G financial, twenty-four, twenty-five budget resolution that I believe was put for us earlier today. And this point in time, would uh, anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Grant moves it, do we have a second? I will second this one. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Okay. Next, human resources, annual Viva resolutions.
This is uh, Viva is the account that uh all of our, all of our different uh um employee groups can choose to put uh like sick leave buyback into um so that the money will be there and they can use it when they retire or for medical costs now. Um, but they have to, as a, as a group, choose if they're gonna participate in Viva or not. And then it does require board approval to approve whatever they've chosen, right, Joe?
So did they choose this, this year in your negotiations that you're doing right now?
No, so every, each one of our um negotiating groups has a, they choose, they have to vote in June about how their days or the money they put into Viva will either go into Viva or be cashed out. And that will be for actually next year. And so they've already decided what will happen for this year. This is for.
This is for next year.
Yes, it's for next year and it doesn't have anything to do with our contracts.
Okay.
You can catch us. All right. Well, board members, would someone like to make a motion to approve this?
Need to approve each one individually or can?
You can do it just all of them together in that recommended action up there.
Yeah.
I'm gonna approve.
Grant moves to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Suzie seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right. Next, will be uh number I, human resources, represented administration's salary resolution.
Yep, this is a resolution that allows us to follow the agreement that's been reached. Uh where in September, October, we look at surrounding districts payment for the, for their salaries for their administrators and then um the administrators get the meeting, media of what they are. Um, and we have to do a resolution because we will back pay them and so this resolution allows us to report to Jill, anything down to that.
Okay. Well, board members, someone like to make the motion to approve this?
I'll move.
I can lose it, we have a second?
Second.
Grant seconds, all right, do we have any uh discussion tonight? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right. Next, human resources superintendent contracts.
This is adding an extension of one year to my contract, which often technically do before June, but didn't do it in the February, March timeline, so.
With evaluation. All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Grant first. I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right. At this point in time, we are now down to public comment. And it is time, do we have public comment for items that were not on our agenda this evening? No one's waiting? Anyone online?
No one on the.
There was a wait fifteen seconds at least. That will, for anyone to feel deprived of the opportunity. All right.
We don't adjourn, we're gonna go into executive session.
Okay, well, with that, the uh meeting is now adjourned for the evening? No, we can't, oh, we gotta go into, oh.
We're gonna move into executive session.
Apologies, we're gonna go into executive session now and when we come back from that, then we will adjourn. This, at this point in time, or do we have any timeline?
About twenty minutes.
About twenty minutes, all right. So, um, at this point in time, um, anyone that is wanting to go, can you go? Uh, can you have like a five minute break?
You can.
All right.